Alright, we're gonna go ahead and... Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sparing any newly elected officials.
So I, I'll have to do that in the county, or the city clerk.
Aye.
You're good. So we'll start with, excuse me, Mayor Pearson. So if you'll just stand and raise your hand, and then just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this state...
And, and the Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge my duties...
And that I will discharge my duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
And that's it. And then we'll do Tammy and Yvonne as well.
One at a time or together?
Um, do you guys wanna do it together or one at a time? You'll just...
Do that, Anna.
You'll just say aye, and you'll say yvonne, and you'll say tammy. Okay. So I...
Yvonne Larson.
Okay, so I...
Aye, Yvonne Larson.
Aye, Tamara Prent.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey...
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge my duties...
And I will discharge my duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Okay.
Alright, we are going to move ahead on the appointment of, actually, roll call first, but...
Um, if you wanna do your appointment, then you can do it.
Okay, alright. We're gonna move on the appointment of the city council member to fill the seat vacated by Kendall.
Okay, so we had three, we actually had three applicants that submitted their names for consideration. First is Laura Patton, Lance Burton, and Heather Myers. And Mayor, I'm not sure how you wanted this, if you want them to take a few minutes and kinda address the council, why they feel like they should be appointed to the council.
I think that was a good idea.
Yeah, I do too.
And just for the record, they're all checked, all their credentials and stuff, and they, they do meet all of the requirements, so.
Gotcha. So first was Laura Patton.
Can't get the handheld mic to work either.
That's okay.
Is there another way to record?
I don't know. I've got the one recording that we'll put on YouTube. Time to learn about the microphone system here.
Really solid.
Testing, testing. How does it sound?
Hi. Yeah.
Testing, testing. Does it? We can't get it here in another minute, we'll just, uh, just record it. I'll just start recording, Yvonne. If we need to, we just need to record another one. Testing, testing. Thank you for your patience. You know, if it wasn't today, it wasn't gonna happen. My laptop recording here. If it's not recording, we gotta go look at... Do we need the reviews first? Go to mom, Tammy, you too. Go over to mom. Testing, testing.
Go push his button, Stacy. Good job, Nick.
Okay, my name is Laura Patton.
Do we have a bomb? Oh, you have trophies. You wanted that for them.
Okay, my name is Laura Patton. I have lived in Sterling for almost ten years. And the reason that I, um, decided to put my name in the handbook for the city council was I just wanted some new perspective. Did realize that there are already two other people that are probably just as well by, or more well by than myself. But I feel like I can bring in, um, something fresh into our community and some diversity. And, um, that's about it. And once you have some questions, I don't really know what else to say. Wasn't prepared for a speech, Keenan.
So, I would like to ask, uh, do you, what, um, so you brought up the outside perspective. Do you have any skills or experience you think would translate well, or?
I, I think so. I, um, believe it or not, I have, um, a few classes in communications. But we didn't have to do impromptu speeches. But anyway, um, I've raised, um, eight of my fifteen children here in Sterling. Um, I've lived in Utah for thirty years, so I'm very, um, aware of our history and culture and diversity, that I, um, feel that Utah is becoming more diverse in a way, so I welcome that. I like living in a small town. I would say that I like the area being more rural. And, um, that would be probably where I'd vote more towards is keep our area as rural as possible with upgrades as needed.
Okay, Yvonne?
Do you, um, do you have a job right now, or do you, did I understand you taught school, or am I...
I, I work as a special ed, um, paraprofessional. And, uh, I'm not working currently. I'm actually a student at Weber State doing the pathway to teaching. Um, degree. So I'm home.
Yeah, well, that wasn't why I was asking, I was just wondering, uh...
So I bring in, um, twenty years of medical, um, experience. I worked as a nurse. Um, I was licensed as a midwife in the state of Arizona. Also, I went through a certain training up in South Jordan, so I have some emergency medical. I've gotten very good at fixing irrigation pipes if anybody needs help.
What visions do you have for the town of Sterling?
Do I have, what patients?
What visions?
Oh, visions. Um, the only vision that I have is a crosswalk at this point. But I would like to expand more activities probably for, um, families, that where we all can get together as a community. And, um, I don't really see, uh, I don't have any visions for like expansion at this point. Some of the expansions that are going on the planning table, um, I wasn't aware of those. And, um, but I, I do have research capabilities, and if I were on the city council, I would be doing a lot of research. And I am constitutionalist, so I would be following whatever the constitution says that we need to do. Don't like flying my, by the seat of my pants.
Any other questions, Yvonne?
Uh, not that I can think of right now, just Tammy's.
Tammy?
I can't think of any, but she had an already answer.
Yeah, I'd like to...
Does the audience have any?
Does the audience, you guys are Sterling citizens, does anybody have questions they think they would like answered? Or asking?
What do you like about Sterling? I love the, uh, the rural area. I came here with, um, ten children, as a single mother. And I believe that everybody has been so gracious to us in getting and welcomed us into the community. I wanna keep that flavor, the community. I like, I like that part of it. Eight of my children have become adults. I actually have fifteen children, and I brought ten of them here. And so they've, it's been a really good place for my kids and I. I mean, we've had a couple tragedies that people were, were up and, and, um, people rallied around us and kept us going. Even Mayor, ex-Mayor Cox. I went to him one time, and, uh, I was really upset, and I was crying. He was like, "Just stop crying and tell me what you mean." But anyway, I just felt like I'm a part of the community, and I've been able to participate in town council because I've been raising children. Because I want them to be a part of the community. I want them to be part of, um, life on the outside.
Do you have any idea of, of what, um, what faces the council people as far as, uh, any, any questions that you would have to us as to how we would handle a certain situation?
Um, at, at this point, I...
And how would you handle it?
At this point, I am just observing and would probably do a lot of research on a subject. Seeing the, the planning committee, committee here this evening and seeing what is actually planned for our community, or what's on the table for our community, really spurs me on to want to be a part of the planning and, um, getting feedback from our neighbors and... Any other questions?
I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And then I think the next one we've asked is Heather, is the one I kept here.
So Mayor Pearson, I have Justin on the phone again.
Okay, awesome.
Um, my name is Heather Myers. I have lived in Sterling my entire life, going on forty-eight years now, on and off. I don't know, this was, I don't know, what do you want to know?
What do, what do you wanna see Sterling accomplish?
To become, um...
What, what do you think?
Unified community like it used to be. Back when growing up, we would have, um, Fourth of the Life celebrations or Pioneer Days. It was a big deal to be grown up in this town. I mean, people that had left town would come back for these celebrations. This is where we need to go, get back, so that we're all united in how things are done. Um, not, you know, this side of town's going for this thing, and this side's doing this thing. We need to be uni- united as a town, period, and not split and go in fifty thousand directions.
Okay, um, what skills or perspectives do you think that you would bring to the, the city council?
Um, I'm currently the lead over the cemetery committee. I am a member of the fire, the voluntary fire department. Um, I have held lead or supervised, you know, manager positions for sixteen years. I can supervise three hundred plus people at any given time. I know ninety percent of the people in town. Anything else? Anybody else? I know that the town's quite a bit.
What do you like about Sterling? You probably already answered that.
This is my town. This is my hometown. And I will do what, you know, research needs to be done to protect this town. Following bylaws and codes and whatever, making sure that it's done clear and concise and, you know, what needs to be done.
I'd like to find out, how do you think you would be able to approach? You say that one group is going in one direction, other group of people are going in another direction. Um, how do you think you can unify these disparate groups?
Communication, clear communication.
Any ideas specifically on that?
It would depend on the situation.
Communication's a big word. Transmitters a lot.
It can, yes.
Yes.
Yvonne, Tammy, you have any other questions?
No, I think she's pretty much...
Someone else did out here, didn't they?
Well, I actually have raised my hand, but mine was a similar question.
Oh, just how would you see yourself unifying the community that, you know, I...
It's all about community and talking and giving everybody's perspective, getting all the facts before deciding who's right. Getting everybody on the same page.
I would like to do that to our county better.
Wouldn't it kind of greatly on the situation? I would have to have more facts in front of me before I could honestly answer the question.
Alright, we'll move on to Lance. Thank you, Heather.
Yep.
Thanks, Ellen.
Want everyone, you're more comfortable.
I don't think they both work, do they?
I think.
Does that work?
Oh, it works.
Alright, now Lance Burton, I've been a resident of Sterling for, uh, four and a half years.
I am not from Utah, but I have been educated in Utah. I don't know where I call home, to be honest with you, because, my parents were from a little town like Sterling, out here in the west, and they transplanted their family back east. And I've had the experience of living in nine different states. Some big metro areas and some little towns. And with that, uh, I've had the opportunity to work for some big companies and some small companies. Get to know a lot of people. When we moved to Sterling, I like many others, we have come to love the people here in our community. And, and that's what I think I would bring, like the other candidates. I wanna see more unity in our town. Through the work that we've done in the last year, getting to know the people that live here. This is a wonderful community. People really do wanna help each other. They wanna see good things in Sterling. They wanna see a safe place for their kids to live. Quality of life in a rural community with opportunities to enjoy the outdoors, that's, that's what I would like to see. And to protect those things. With regards to some of my qualifications, I said I have a, an education in information systems. I'm a very logical thinker. I was a programmer for a long time and worked with some systems engineering companies, some big companies. But I made a career change and ended up in the insurance industry. And as that, I've spoken about what's important to people for twenty years. From people from California to New York. Tens and tens of thousands of people I've spoken to in the last twenty years. And so I've gotten good at listening to what is important to people. And before making a decision, you know, what, what needs to be considered. So, um, I think those would be very important qualifications. I don't believe that as a member of the town council, it's my position to push the agenda, but to listen to the people in the town of Sterling and find out what does the town of Sterling want. And as an elected official, of course, maybe there's a little bit more information that, that we have as elected officials, but then it becomes our responsibility to help bridge that gap between what people want and what they understand and what maybe we understand, so that we can develop that, that mutual understanding and, and have that unity that we're looking for. Any questions?
Um, so let me make sure, your vision of Sterling that you said right there is you're looking for what the people want? And then you want to help that happen, like what the people want, or do you have a different vision of Sterling than that?
Well, I, I think what the people want, uh, as I was looking at the, the plan that was sitting out this, this evening from Jones and Mill, and what are these goals that Sterling has, and, and I have some questions about, what is an economic development plan for the town of Sterling? And, and I'm curious if that includes, you know, some employers. Is it, it, those are things that have never been brought up to my attention. I don't think most of the people in Sterling wanna see, you know, um, companies come in and, you know, adding hundreds of jobs to Sterling, and that's gonna challenge our rural way of life here. So I think, uh, when I see those kinds of things, I would wanna get more information. So there's obviously things that we wanna protect.
Right. In response to that, Yvonne, correct me if I'm wrong, um, with, uh, the county asks for what our plan for Sterling is. So whether it would be rural, you know, just keeping it the way it is, or if we are gonna add more commercialization and stuff. That's something the county and the state of Bull ask us to do, also some of the grants we're filling out. Um, so that's, so that's not necessarily that we're gonna be adding businesses and jobs to, uh, Sterling. That's, that's trying to figure out which direction we're trying to head there. And then, um, the last question I have for you is what do you like about Sterling?
Well, I think one of the things is, obviously, the people, we like the sunsets. I don't think you like sunsets anywhere. I don't think you like sunsets anywhere in the world like you get in Sterling. The little cash county likes to brag, but we just don't debate that because we don't want them to know how good it is down here. But, I mean, we like the clean air. Like I said, I've lived in other places and, you know, north of us, there's a nasty pollution problem. We like clean living and, you know, if there's a way we can get more water, that would be wonderful. But I think that might be a little bit beyond our control.
Okay, Yvonne?
I've answered every question I had.
Ten.
Me too, we kind of went through, we kind of used poor Laura as a stepping stone and everybody's kind of taken on from there and, so we didn't have to, but...
Does anybody else have some suggested questions? Judy?
How would you find out more about the wishes of the people in Sterling when I'm aware of the response so far on the Jones and DeMille questions are out there? And I'm just kind of curious. There's a real disconnect, I think, between people that are interested in Sterling as a whole versus... Mine, 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 you know what I mean? They're just interested in themselves. And I mean no disrespect, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, just read what you mean.
I mean no disrespect to any of them, I'm just curious. How do you think you can bridge that particular divide that I see so often and hear about more often?
Well, I think it's, it's got to be more than just listening, because I can listen to you, but that doesn't convey a sense of trust that I really am interested in letting you tell me what you really feel. Okay? But creating that unity has to, has to start with a level of trust. You know, as a town, are we really committed to moving in a direction that is going to benefit the town, the people in the town? And I think the only way that we can establish that is by allowing the open forum, which we have public meetings once a month. And maybe there's more ways to do that than, and offering people to provide suggestions, because maybe a town forum isn't for everyone. So there may be some other ways that we can ask for input from the community that is less threatening than, you know, a public hearing. So if you say, you know, look, you're going to be on a recording, you know, can we send it in or drop it in the box, or some other ways of getting input from the people in the community that they will feel comfortable doing.
Okay, just as we didn't ask this question to Laura. Laura, would you want to respond to the how would you bring the community together? Because I think we gave both the other people the opportunity to answer that question and we didn't give it to you.
I think that having the town council meeting recorded has been an asset for me, because I haven't been able to leave my home. So now, having that available, I think opens the door up versus the open forum. Let me talk about the open the door. That possibly those surveys going out may, may get an increase in those. Maybe we'll be able to bridge that gap that way. And I think that, I think all of us want to bring our community together. And it's going to take a lot of us to do that, not just people sitting up here, but... You know, we'll have the training-
Hey, Stacy?
Yes, sir? Yeah?
I, I think I must have missed Laura's introduction, is that right?
Yeah, you did.
Did you ever do a thirty-second introduction to me?
Yeah, you're on speakerphone, so Sheen can hear you.
Okay.
That's much better than this.
Laura, do you mind? I guess if it's okay with me here?
Justin, he's on-
He missed your, he missed your opening.
Because we were trying to get him back.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hi, Justin, I'm Laura Patton, and I'm running for town council board member, chair. And I've lived here for almost ten years. And I come with experience from a medical standpoint, communications. I have run teams as well in the clinic.
Cert.
And-
Cert.
And cert, I'm also cert certified, I guess.
Fifteen children.
I have fifteen children, ten are special needs. So I can handle a lot of different personalities, doesn't matter how many you have. Sorry. I just like that.
You also said you're very familiar with the area of history.
I am familiar with Sterling. I love Sterling. I like it to keep it rural with updates as we need them, you know, to upgrade if we need them. I raised eight of the children here to adulthood, we have fifteen. And we moved out here as a sanctuary, not a salt lake. So, and we found that, we found that the peace of community.
No, I'm sorry, I, I can't hear super well, but I think I caught most of everything. So thank you for the introduction again. I'm sure everybody heard it twice.
All right, and then, when we do vote, is it me and the council, or is it just the six?
You're just a tiebreaker.
Okay, I thought so. Before we do the vote, though, I would like to thank the people that applied for this position. We went from last year having three positions in the city council open, mayor and two city council spots. And there was one applicant for each person. We had three people apply for this one. Obviously, we've only got one position available. But I wanted to thank the people that have applied. That's, that's just awesome that we, we're moving in the right direction as far as city involvement goes. I also really want to thank Jane, Kendall, and Randall over there, as well as everybody that's on the city council. This isn't an easy job. The only people that have applied or worked on this are doing so to help. Also Heather does a lot of volunteer with, volunteer work with the cemetery, just something she didn't bring up. So, do we just call for the vote? Do we like ask for who's in favor of Laura and then-
No, it's done by motion.
Okay.
So-
Will we make a motion to vote?
You make your motion to appoint.
Each of us make a motion, tell them?
No, somebody needs to make a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Heather Myers.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, all those in favor of Heather Myers, say aye.
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 Okay, so that would be-
I thought on the five council thing that the mayor is part of the five council and there's four council members.
I always understood that it was a tiebreaker vote.
No, that's only on the sixth county, a sixth member. I make a motion that we, now that we have Lance be council member.
Okay, can I get a second?
So, sorry, just a second. So there was already a motion on the table to appoint Heather Myers?
Okay, can we clarify on the-
Can you mail this mark?
That's something, can we clarify if the mayor votes in this situation? I know that, I know that this is dragging it through and stuff, but just due to misunderstandings of the past, I'd really like it if we make sure we're always doing the same thing.
Do you have that look that talks about it there?
I do, in my car, if you'll allow me to run.
It talks about it in there that on the sixth member-
Can you mail this mark?
Was there anybody that voted no?
No. Well-
On that first vote?
There was a person, there was a motion made in the second.
If the motion passed, then that would be the end of it, I suppose.
But if he votes two, then that would make it tied. How do you do that?
A tie would.
So, Mark, your question is, is there, they're saying that the mayor has a vote, but he's a tiebreaker vote.
And that's only on the sixth member. On the five member, he's part of the council. But it's not a five member, it's only a four member and a mayor.
So, Stacy, question. How, how can Keenan be a tiebreaker if he's only the fourth person voting, right? So there's Tammy, me, and Yvonne and Keenan. I, I didn't actually hear what the votes were on that, the motion.
So, you and Yvonne were in favor of, and Tammy was against.
Oh, so if Keenan, so, okay.
Just try to write it, because there's only four, but I can't count them.
There's not a one, there, motion fails.
If it's a tie, the motion failed? And then I'm guessing that if we're going to do it based on a motion, we only get one vote between the three, correct?
Yeah, so if the, if the vote to appoint Heather failed, then another motion could be put on the table. Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah.
So if there's only the three voting, then it didn't fail.
Was there two yes and one no?
Well, yes.
Yeah, I didn't ask for the all opposed.
Aye. I just, I just, we're not sure what we're doing, so...
Well, if the, if the-
This is awesome.
I think Stacy's right, he would, he would break the tie if there's a tie.
Because there's only four members, right?
But if there's three-
But there's only three, because-
He votes, then there wouldn't be a tie to break.
Okay, so then it just goes, yeah.
Okay, all right, so-
This is awesome, though, you guys, we've never had multiple people applying.
Yes, that really is, that's the-
So this is just awesome.
If we can, let's keep moving in this direction, bridging that divide, like you talked about. So that means that Heather would be the new city council member then, right? Oh, congratulations, Heather.
I'm secretly for this meeting, so I'm going to have to take off.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, thanks, Yvonne.
Thanks, Justin. I did not, oh.
So Heather, what were you in?
Hi.
Oh, we have to turn it on.
Okay, always where your hands, okay, so I just solemnly swear-
I just solemnly swear-
That I will support, obey, and defend-
That I support, obey, and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge the duties-
And I will discharge the duties-
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Yeah. Let's have you say it here.
All right, so now we do roll the call, right? Tammy?
Here.
Yvonne?
Here.
Heather?
Here.
Keenan, or Justin was here. And then, Keenan here.
Not to say that it's excused, there was something that was-
Justin has been excused.
I know, that's what I thought.
All right, Yvonne will call, Stacy?
No, but I don't like being here.
Okay.
You don't have to call me, it's okay.
All right, and then Keenan is here. Okay, so reading of minutes from previous meeting?
We just read them and then ourselves, yeah, we haven't even had a chance.
I know, we haven't even looked at them.
Maybe we can do it at the end, sometimes.
All right.
So we can move on with these guys and-
All right, so we're going to address the nonprofit. We've got Tab, or no.
Was she going to do the certificates first?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, we have. Randall, can I get you up there?
Nope.
Randall, Yvonne put together this beautiful certificate for you for seventeen years of outstanding service and dedicated service to the town of Sterling. The people here love you. I've heard so many people talk about how, like, you go and just help them over, go over and help them yourself. And when I asked you about what to look out for, the first thing you told me was look for the people that can't pile their driveways and try to help them out. You're even big shoes to fill, and I'd like to thank you for everything you're doing. And you're great, Tab, Randall.
Hey, Yvonne, my name is Mary. I need a water connection. Across the street from my house. And it's never had a culinary water put in. So this spring-
That's your piece of property, right?
Yeah. So this spring, how about putting one in?
That's your first-
Ten-four.
Okay.
Are you going to do the happy now?
Um, I appreciate this, and I appreciate all the people that work with. I'm gonna miss it in a way, and another way I'm not. But if you need help, I'm here to help you. Stacy, I love you so much. You've helped me out. Now, if I didn't have her, we wouldn't have done nothing.
Kendall, can I get you up here? And you want to bring your wife, too? So Kendall, again, Yvonne's on top of it. She put together this beautiful first certificate for four years of outstanding service and dedicated service to the town of Sterling. I'd like to thank you for this. You were, you and Jane have both been someone that have been eager to help me learn the new position and really just be there. And even though you guys are bleeding, you guys have let that door open and, you know, told me I can always call you if I need help. I really appreciate that. Both of you are such great people. When I first met you, Kendall, you talked about how you never wanted this job and you did it just to help out the people of Sterling. And I know that sometimes people forget that, what you do for the community. But it means a lot, and I'd like to thank you guys. And if we can ever do anything for you guys, please let us know.
Well, I'm not going to give you a big speech, but it's been a real interesting and learning experience. And I hope that this dividedness in the town can come together, be united, and be as one. So, good luck.
All right, so we are going to discuss Shane Burton on, and we're going to have a final vote on the donations to the prep squad. We've got an attorney, I'm terrible with names. Can you remind me?
Mark McKiff.
Mark McKiff. Sorry, Mark. We're curious as to the legality of the city donating, donating to a nonprofit. You could help-
Or you can go up there.
Yeah, or we can run a one over two.
Mindful there.
I'll just stand here. Okay. All right, I came to this not knowing what was going to be asked. And so I'm going to do my best. I think I've been explaining the situation as I understand it. The emergency management group was maybe part of, maybe part of the town before, but then officially separated at some-
um officially separated at some point, big last fall, and the question now is, can the town give money to? If I understand it correctly, so, um, I, uh, I guess one question would be, is it, is it a donation, or is it paying sort of like a contract, because they're going to provide some service to the city, uh, to the town on, um, and whether or not it's one or the other, um, probably isn't, um, all important, uh, either way, what really, my advice, and I'm not here to argue for one thing or the other, I don't care what you do with it, I'm just here to answer questions the best I can, and it's a political issue more than a legal issue, um, either way, the, the auditors are the ones who go through every year and audit the city's finances, and, um, they can raise more trouble than about anybody else, so, uh, satisfying them is, uh, of utmost importance in my, uh, that's my advice to you, and so I'm told that, uh, the auditors, Kimball and Roberts, uh, get, wrote an email a few months ago, and it was read at one of these meetings. I haven't, I haven't seen that email, I've only heard about it.
Yeah, I can't find it in my email.
And so, um, I've been told that, that what it says is, um, the, the practice of donating is frowned upon, but still okay, uh, but you do have to open the budget, have a public meeting, and in order to, uh, budget that amount, or the donation or the expenditure, and so, uh, that last part doesn't surprise me. Frowned upon, uh, I, I guess I would characterize that as being, i- if you're, they may say it's frowned upon, because you have to be able to justify expenditures of taxpayer dollars, uh, uh, no matter where you spend, and so, uh, is it easy to defend, um, and defend politically more than anything probably, uh, a donation to, oh, what, I mean, there's, there, there, there's groups that ask for donations all the time, I don't know if they're, they come to Sterling a lot, but they come everywhere else, uh, giving it to a, an entity that is, uh, going to provide some emergency management training to people, um, in this community, uh, seems to be, uh, something that would be more easily defended than, than other things you could donate to, um, and so I I, I guess I would just say, um, I don't know of any, any law that says you can't do that, in fact, um, there are plenty of cities and counties that I've seen that, that give donations regularly. Now, I know that some, uh, cities and counties don't want to do that, because once you open the door, you're gonna have a line of people, um, wanting donations, uh, and so, uh, I, but I can't tell you that, I can't tell you not to do it, um, I, uh, as I said before, I think there's a, there's a way that you can justify this, seems like a worthwhile expenditure, but it's a political question, it's something that the council, the mayor and the council is gonna have to decide. I would, I would say this, though, um, now that the entity has been separated from the town, I would encourage you to keep it separate, if, if, I think it's better to, to donate the money uh, than it is to buy equipment and let them use it, but still call it the city's, or the town's, because, um, the, the more that the, that the more that still belongs to the town, the more it looks like the group is still part of the town. And you don't, I don't think you want the potential liability that goes along with having a group tied to the town, but that you really don't supervise, somebody else is in charge of, and so I, I really, I honestly hate that the world is controlled so much by the fear of liability, but I didn't create that problem, I'm just telling you what it is, and everybody knows about it, uh, and so most lawyers are gonna say, be cautious, you don't want liability, and so if you're going to have a group that is not really the town's, don't make it the town's, let them, let them be independent, if you wanna give them the money to buy things, great. But don't, don't have so many ties that it looks like it's part of the town. If it's the town's, then supervise them, if it's not the town's, then let them do what they gotta do, that's, that's my advice, a- as for, it's just like anybody else, if the, if the group wants to use this building, well, you let other groups not use this building. So it's not like you're saying only our groups can use this building, if you rented out the families and, and things like that, and so, um, that, that doesn't indicate that the town still owns the entity. So what, what else can I answer? You, you have to make the call, I'm not gonna make it for you.
I think you've pretty much covered it.
Yeah, go ahead, let us know.
Okay.
It's just up to the council on what.
Yeah, the, the city council, as a reminder, we do have some, uh, responsibility, we do have a responsibility, um, for preparedness, um, I know that there have been arguments in the past as to why we want to retain control over these things, but I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we're not gonna find someone that works harder than Shane, if we support Shane, the town is doing something, if not, we need to do something else, and I haven't met someone that's gonna devote this kind of time and energy in it. Um, is this something we're able to vote with, without Justin, because it's a budget?
Um, he gave me his vote over text.
But he didn't hear him.
Yeah.
Jane, could you help something?
Yes, I would like to know what an accounting of the money is going to go towards. If the town is choosing to make this donation, then I would like to know where that money is being spent, and how that money is being spent.
So, um, in response to that, Jane, um, I think, uh, Mark kind of hit on it, it's gonna be like, whether it's a donation, or whether we're trying to get something out of it, I think the way we have to do this is a donation, and we'd have to be trusting the organization as, as such, we're not specifically asking for.
So would it be a twelve hundred dollar donation once a year?
I think, right now, we've just voted on it for, I think right now, we've just voted on it for one time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think, I think you're, what you're saying is, is really, part of their pitch on why they should get it, is, is gonna use it for a yes. And I think that the, the council considers that part of the decision, whether to make it or not.
Right.
But they're not, I don't think the, the town is gonna say, you need to come back to us and show us that that's exactly what you use it for. If I've understood.
Jane, can I get a motion that we?
Oh, just why not, it's a win.
I'm sorry, I'm just, okay.
So he started, he asked me to.
Kendall. And I'm sorry, but the last part of the question was, is it an ongoing thing? I, I think what you're talking about is, is opening the budget in order to do it for this year, you can't commit to next year, you can only commit to this year, you'll have to come back to, to ask again during the next budget.
Right.
Okay, can I get a, can I get, um, does someone wanna make a motion to vote on the donation to the nonprofit?
I make a motion that we vote on donating the twelve hundred dollars to the non, uh, non, our preparedness group.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, the motion fails. Alright, if that's the case, um, can I get, would it be possible to get on the next budget, or the next meeting, the agenda that we address what the city's going to do for preparedness? Thank you. Alright. Okay, we've got Tad Spencer with Jones and DeMille, discussion on GIS system.
Oh, you're gonna creep it out here, Tad.
I'm actually not giving the present presentation today, I'm, I'm, this is Adam Brashon, he's my manager, yeah, Jones and DeMille. Thank you. This is, um, Adam Brashon, he's my manager, the office in Richfield. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, as Tad mentioned, I'm Adam Brashon. I'm from Jones and DeMille, and I work out of Richfield office, but I have roots, uh, real close, grew up near from, graduated from anti-high, and I got my favorite dog from the Jarvis's here, in Sterling. It was a great, uh, great friend for me growing up, um, the crux of where, what we are doing here is to introduce to you a potential solution to helping you understand what assets the city has, particularly in terms of utilities, that you can use it, and, or other, managing other infrastructure, um, helping display data to citizens of the town, public, and also use it internally. And it was my understanding from a previous council meeting, there was some question about where some of the water lines were, where the assets actually are, and that's a pretty common issue with especially rural communities, where you have someone that's been the water master, the public works person, usually it's only one person that's been managing that for years and years, they have a lot of institutional knowledge in their minds, and as they start transitioning out of their, their service, uh, it's hard for the upcoming folks to know where things really are, and so the, the idea here is to get your information mapped into a okay, in this case, it's a web-based application, so you can interact and see where your utility data is. So I'm gonna transition and plug in my laptop here, that's okay, and I'll show you a brief demonstration, I know you've been here for a little while. I can do a deeper dive demonstration in a, in a working meeting or where public works, if you wanna explore it a little further. Let's see if that'll. There we go. What you're looking at here is a web-based mapping system, and what Tad and I do at Jones and DeMille, we're GIS technicians and professionals, that stands for geographic information systems, and we've been helping cities, towns, put a lot of their utility, road, and other infrastructure data into web maps like this. And I'll show you here in, in a moment, the interactiveness and nature of it, but again, it acts as, uh, a database, an interactive database of your information, so that you can know where things are, look it up, and you can actually edit and improve the data as you go forward, as things are added, removed, improved, and so on. So in this case, it's a little bit cut off on the left-hand side, but you'll be able to see the middle of the, the screen here, this is Mona City, one utility system we put in recently, as we navigate in and out of the, the map. Uh, if you've used Google Maps before, you can use the system, it's pretty intuitive, and I will say that this is the web map version. You also, with this type of solution, can get it on a, a phone or a tablet app, and you go out the field and, and see this information and make changes in the field as well to the data, so in this case, we have a culinary water system. We have different layers that can be turned on or off, and no legend to describe what those various data points are, and in this case, you have information you can interact with, for instance, I can click on that meter, and there's all sorts of information that can be tracked about it. You can create histories to document when you replaced it, when you red it, whatever it is that you're trying to track, you can also attach pictures to that meter, hydrant, whatever it is you might be looking at, so just by interacting with the map, you can see the location, you can see information about, in this case, it's a pipe, and learn a little bit more about its location, how accurate it is, and so forth. So it gives you a really good opportunity to see, and much different than old plan sets, a lot of the public works guys have old plan sets that they have in their truck and are looking at, they get sprayed and coffee spill on, and so kind of things, in this case, you can actually dial down, zoom in, and see things in, in much more detail than you would on a plan set. This type of environment also helps you understand where things might be, uh, erroneous, you can find out, and then go in and correct them. Just a real brief here, you can edit the data, so you can actually add features to the system. You can also click on features, update the attributes, that's the information you're tracking about it, you can update locations, and again, you can do this both in a web browser, as well as on your mobile app, in a phone or a tablet. In addition to the, the water system, which is, my understanding is perhaps your most critical need to start with, you can also do things like this, um, this is Oak City, this is their road network, and I know we're talking about future plans earlier this evening, you can put out different aspects of the town where you want particular growth to be directed, and so in this case, they've drawn out a grid of where their future roads might be, and Oak City may not grow that much to necessitate all these roads, but when they're making decisions, they know if a road is to be there out of answer the questions or make decisions on what should or shouldn't be allowed there to preserve or worse, uh, or if they want to change that, they can make a potential change and take one of those roads off. You can also do a lot more with the mapping system, and in this case, this is a zoning map. And you jump into it, and we made this for the public, so they can come in and see the zoning, just a little disclaimer here. It's a little zoning map of Oak City to show what the different zones are, people from the public can click on it, they can really zoom in and dial down and see where the zoning boundaries are and so forth. So I know I jumped through a lot in real, uh, real quickly here, but I did entertain any questions about GIS system, particular utilities, uh, how it could benefit the town, and then if you would, uh, like more information outside of this meeting, we can certainly meet with public works and dive in a little deeper, but does the council have any questions at the moment?
Um, I have a question, is this part of the, the package we're getting, or is this something that we're looking at adding to the package?
You mean for the plan that's.
Yeah, the, the plan that we, we're working with you guys on.
This is separate from that, um, although the results of that plan could be integrated onto this platform.
Do we know how much more, uh, having this would cost?
It would, highly depend on what you wanna do, so if you wanted to just start with your, you have utilities, culinary water, and you have power?
Yeah, or.
Well, it's huge top power.
Okay, so, but you don't run the system, you have irrigation. So the things that you own are the culinary and irrigation water?
Say what?
The city owns and operates the water in the.
Not your game.
Not your game, just your game.
It's a separate company.
So just water essentially is what you own and operate? So, to get it in a platform like this, um, we can give you a, a, or a concrete number, but you're only looking at about two thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars to get this in this format, but that doesn't include the data collection. And data collection is where. And data collection is where some of the, the major costs can come from. We did a similar project for Inkley Town and both did their sewer and water for about $14,000. Uh, if you didn't have the sewer and were much closer, you'd probably be in the $7,000 to $8,000 range. Now, that seems like a lot, especially for a town like Sterling. And I definitely understand that budget and dollars are tight. What this does for you is saves you a lot of time and headache down the road of trying to figure out where things are. We have worked with our clients before to save money on the data collection. One example is Elsinore Town. We loaned out our data collector to the town. And they actually went out and shot all of the, when I say shot, that's taking the GPS position of the hydrants valves and meters. And that's really the goal of the cost. So if you had somebody here that at the time was willing to do something like that, we could get that, that a shot, lower rate for you. That would, a little sweat equity, I guess is what I'm saying you could do and we're just to save some budget dollars. And we're willing to trade and be accommodating for that.
And you said that this could be part of the package, like, I know we were working, I believe with a grant on part of this. When would we have to know, uh, when would we have to give you a definite answer, like? Like I think that our next public budget hearing is in June. So would we be able to wait until June or is this something that would have to get addressed sooner?
This is on your timeline. This is just a service we offer that Tad recognized when he was attending one of your previous council meetings. That could really benefit the town, so.
Should be willing to work with us on, like if we got back to you guys on, uh, like what we can do to get the price down? Like you had mentioned, taking pictures, scouting out the locations, marking them down and stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is just again, a service we're offering, we're just introducing today. And so, uh, we can continue to talk to, about it over the next few months, work out some more details. We can give you a more official proposal that you could then vote on, that are more budget important. That's pretty common. So we're just here to provide what assistance we can for you and then work with the town. Because again, I know budget dollars are pretty tight in little towns like this. And that's part of the beauty of it, I guess, a small town. You get to work, you gotta find solutions in different ways than, than other places do. And have to work for it. But as I was mentioning, you can add, in addition to culinary, you can do zoning, you can do, uh, the, the results of your future plan that Mike Hansen's working with you on. There's a lot of great things you can do with it. So the utilities is usually the, the first step. Just because it's one of the more apparent needs to start tracking. Okay.
This kind of brings up a question. Randall, don't we have maps and whatever on, on where all the culinary water lines and even the irrigation, don't we have? Scott says no.
There is an irrigation, Juan, that, the.
Cause it seems like I've seen.
Yeah, and it's in the office.
Yeah. I knew I'd seen some.
And those, those maps are pretty critical, because what we typically do is go out and take the locations of the things you can see above ground. But most of your system is underground. And so we use those locations that we take and then use the plan sets to essentially, the word is digitize, we're drawing where those lines are based on. The known locations above ground and then the plan sets that are available. And then we would work with your water master, public works to make sure that we've drawn everything correctly, make changes. Because sometimes plan sets, as good as the engineers are in this field, they get changed because they get to hit something or need to move around.
You, you could probably go for a grant to get the money for this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the C I B has been, they haven't funded a lot of GIS specific projects for us, but. They are a lot more prone to give money at a grant or loan. If you're doing this type of thing in conjunction with a, say a water study. So if you had a need for a water study, say that was something like $25,000, I'm just throwing out a number. And then you say, we're going to do the GIS with it. They're really more prone to do that in conjunction with it. So you can get a lot of the GIS funded just by pairing it with a, a water study, for example. You get a little more bang for your buck that way. I'm not sure if you've done a water study, a need, a water study, but that's something we could help to look at when we talk about this a little more in costing a proposal.
And Scott, didn't, um, the scouts or a portion of the scouts or something for some kind of. Merit badge or something, GPS the water system?
Well, they, they did not. They did the irrigation system. So the irrigation system that, uh, the Sterling Irrigation Company, they did do that, but it's crude. It's very crude. We, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you as a water operator, we need this more than just about anything. We need this, because I, I can tell you, I've looked for the maps, I've been through every map that we have, that the city owns. And we've got part of it, like Randall said, we've got part of the town, but there's a lot that we don't have. And that's what keeps me up at night, you know? If, if we break the main water line, and we don't even really know where the shut offs are on all of these. We, you know, we, we are in need of this in a, in a really bad way, so. Man, I see that, I think, man, that is the, that would be so nice. So I, I would encourage the town to work towards that.
Thank you.
You probably want to retire someday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Heather, you have any questions? Eva?
I just knew that we had something.
Having?
Didn't know how, um, to date it was, so that ended.
Yeah, we can get volunteers or something to help do that, maybe that's something we can look at.
That's what I'm thinking. See what information we've already got.
Yeah.
All right.
I appreciate your time and we'll just continue to be in contact, uh, Public Works and then we can figure out how to approach this together.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tad. Uh, Stacy, I've got a question for you. So I know that if it's not on the agenda, we're not supposed to discuss it, that doesn't include like asking like the fire department if they've got anything that needs to be brought up, right?
So actually, there's a section on there that says reports of officers and stuff.
Okay, alright.
And that's, you know, where they call, so planning and fire department and the other committees that we have, so like the cemetery committee, that's where they report.
Okay.
So they're just always on the agenda.
Alright. Heather, does the cemetery, oh wait, Tammy's over.
Yeah, Tammy's over the cemetery.
You're gonna have to remind me who's over.
That's what I just wanted you to let me.
Yeah, and you did. Don't remember stuff.
I, I have to defer to Heather, because I think.
Alright.
We haven't met, we didn't meet in December or January. We're gonna start again in February. You said that, yeah. But I have the lumber bought. I will get, finish getting the letters this week so that we can start assembling and, and you've got the lights, right? They're here and gone. So we'll move it right along, move it right down the stairs.
Okay, Nick?
Yes, sir.
What do you, do you have anything for the fire department?
Um, just a couple of things real quick. So I, I, I talked with, with the mayor a little bit before meeting. Sorry, Stacy, she's on the. We, we need to get on the capital improvements list to, to continue to move on with our C I B application. So that's something that needs to come from, I, I believe the mayor himself needs to put us on that list. I, I ordered him to contact information. That's, that's step one of getting going. Step two is, uh, we really need to figure it out. Randall had sold that piece of ground that we was looking at. The only other potential piece of ground was, was the piece on First North here. So we really need to take a hard look at that and, and get kind of the correction that we want to go. I can go to C I B without the ground? I, I think it's an uphill battle, uh, if, if we do that. Uh, that's just my own opinion. I think if we had the ground in hand, it would be a much easier sell. I, I don't know, I don't think they're going to give us a hundred percent grant. I would be really, really surprised. So the, the, the conversation probably needs to lead to, what are we willing to do? General obligation bonds, lease revenue bonds, uh, stuff of that nature. That needs to be a conversation that's way bigger than just me. That would be, that would be certainly the council and probably Public, but as well. That's way bigger than me. There's a couple of other ideas I have that I'm gonna kick around, uh, maybe with the county attorney on some unincorporated things. But that's super, super new to me and I don't even know the, the legal side of that yet, so we can talk much about that. So that's what's going on with the fire station itself. I do think we have a good look at getting a grant for it though. We'll get eighty percent of, say, I mean, let's just say for the O G quiz factor, a $2 million building, that's a. That's a, that's a big chunk of change in our pocket, but I don't know how everybody feels about it, right? And, uh, this is not my fire station, this is ours, this is the community's, this has, this is, this is something the community would need input on, right? So that's the story on the fire station. Winter fire school's coming up, we're sending four people. They'll be leaving Thursday. Be back Sunday, I would think. Other than that, we had a killer training with Johnson last night, it was fantastic. Heather and me, we were both there, hope they enjoyed it. We're gonna go again on Monday. Other than that, we're just moving right along. One thing I just want to make sure I'm clear on, I know we adopted a new travel policy. So I'm gonna have people traveling. Can I just snake a copy of that somewhere, just so I make sure we are following what we need to be following there?
Yeah.
Just so I know, I'm, I'm, I'm careful with whatever we're doing, we just, I just want to make sure we're doing it, right? Whatever that may be. So there's good for thought for you guys, so I, I think it can't hurt to get on the capital improvements list, right? If we don't make action on it, they're not gonna slap our hands. We, but we do need to get on that list, right? If we have any shot going to C I B in June, we have to get on that list.
So how soon do you have to get on that list?
I want to say it's January. So it used to be you could get on the capital improvements list anytime through the year. They've since changed that. The, the C I B's changed a little bit in the last two years now. So now they have a, they have a open, kind of an open enrollment period, and, and I think that's going on now.
What do you have to do to do it?
Basically, you have to call, I think his name is Tyler Timmons. He's with the six county A O G. And, and he's really the guy that organizes that list. And then that list for Sampit. Once that list gets tabulated from the individual entities, it goes to the county commissioners and then they vote on prioritizing them projects, right? So, so of course, the higher prioritization from the county commissioners, the better we would look, uh, going forward to C I B. I, I, I don't think we get to see that list, I don't think that's a list we have access to. But it does exist. So that's all of my understanding, it might not be gospel doctrine. It's not doctrine by name, but that's how I understand how that.
So who needs to do that?
I think if, I think if the mayor were contacting, I really think it has to come from him. I actually think it has to come from him, his, himself, because I think he is over the building authority for the town. Is the way I understand that. Does that make sense to everybody? That's how I, he got, uh, that's how I interpret that.
Yeah, so he needs, so how does he get the information?
Yeah, I've given, I've ordered him to contact. Jones and DeMille is Tyler Fattis, uh, but he gave me some sort of idea. So you have to attach some sort of a dollar figure to this project. I visited with Tyler yesterday. He was gonna give me some sort of investment. So anyway, I'll just, I'm just rolling with that, you know? So unless anybody else has any needs from us, um, we're, we're just gonna roll right along. So everybody good? So fire school, um, all the receipts are turned in, they'll bring me all the receipts, um, if they're. And then also, did, did the town decide, are, are they paying state rate for meals, just so my people know? So it's like twenty for dinner, ten for lunch, eight for breakfast. Is that what they adopt? I, I, I don't know.
Was that in one of those?
Wasn't that in the travel policy that you guys have discussed?
One of those seventeen?
I know the state has a rate, I don't know what that rate is, but I, I want to make sure that information goes with my people, so.
Yeah, I, I know federal is higher than state.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, and, and obviously it's, it's the policy that the town adopted is what we have to follow. We don't want to stay here all along, but, uh, it's whatever we, I, I don't know what all you guys adopt. But if you guys just want to give me a copy of it, so they're gonna leave on Thursday, so I just want to make sure with all of that, because that's new for us, right? That's not how we've traditionally done it, so, uh, it's fine however we gotta do it, they're all gonna be, but other than that, I think we're just going right along, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, 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 sorry.
No, never.
Alright, one other thing.
You said bye.
So, so anyway, yeah, sorry. So the I am responding, um, I visited with you guys all about the I am responding. Um, that was the reason we went and bought that laptop, I, I visited with you about him. Our, our free trial has expired, so. My dude, my guys all love it. I'm just gonna be honest.
Well, if they love it, we better get it.
They love it, so I, I, it's in between three and $400 a year for a subscription to this. My, my, my people love it, right?
So can you remind me what this is?
Okay, so what it does is we set up a laptop to listen for our tones. And when the pager goes off, it texts all of us. It's actually super sweet.
So is this what you was talking about, that you didn't have to have your?
So hopefully at some point, we can eliminate pagers.
Pagers, yeah.
That's the idea is that. So it's a super sweet deal. It actually, so we, we, at some point, we'll put a TV in the fire station and it'll actually, when they hit I am responding, so it asks you if you're responding. It'll pull them up on a GPS map to where they're at. So it's, it's super sweet. Uh, my dudes all love it, it's all in mind, so.
Do we have to open the budget to do that?
No, he has it in his budget to spend.
So anyways, if.
We need to make a motion or anything? Like right now?
It would be, so I don't know the exact dollar figure, Madison told me in between three and $400.
Do we need a exact amount?
And we don't need to state the amount? We don't have to do it?
So just if, if it goes over $400, I'll let you guys know.
Okay, so we have to have enough of the agenda to vote on, or can we just be given the split wire budget?
You can do both ways either, why?
Well, that's.
It doesn't really need a motion made on it.
Okay, it's already.
It stays within our purchasing policy.
Okay, so if you guys are comfortable with it, I, I'll, I'll go ahead and do it, that's good for you guys. Okay, thanks guys, that's it.
Just don't put my phone on until business.
No, no, it's, it's actually fantastic. We'll take you if you want to come.
Zeb, do you have anything?
Justin Squires is gonna build out here on Steeplands development out there.
You mean you got a, it's going already?
No, this is another one. This will be another one. This will be another one.
Another home, he sold a one or something?
You what?
Did he sell a one and he said another one?
Well, yeah, the, the one girl's already, well, what's her name?
Well, isn't that Steve's daughter?
Steve's daughter is building the one, they're gonna build another one next to it.
Okay.
He said it's the stuff, but there's not, I mean, I was just letting you guys know that it is happening.
Justin's.
Squires.
And they've got the water shares and all the other stuff.
Yeah, because they have their own well. Don't they have their own well or something that they, or?
Alright. And then Lyle Young wants to do some sort of a development. And he'll come to our meeting in February, so we've got that coming. I don't know what it is. All he said was a project, so we'll have that coming our way also.
You haven't had a meeting this, didn't have, need for a meeting this?
No, but we will have one in February. And I think Jones and DeMille have wanted to come also to that, so.
You're invited. Send him an invite.
And other than that, that's all we've got.
Okay. Scott, you have anything in regards to the water?
I don't, not unless you had any questions, but no, I, we're good.
Okay, um, I would like to bring up, and I went to the, the landfill.
Mayor's and commissioners' meeting.
Mayor's and commissioners' meeting. We have, I, I really can't remember what it's called.
And you're defending, we pay our dues to Sampit County Landfills, so, I mean, in your defense.
Right. On the, uh, Senator Lee's aide was there. He wanted to know, he wanted to let us know that the state is trying to push for more grants to do with water. I've talked to Scott, he said that we need, he thinks we needed a, to look at a pressure reduction station, the one on the Palisades side. to look at a pressure reduction station, the one on the Palisades side. If we can get a grant for that, cause they're gonna try to push more through. They said that we want to get this stuff figured out beforehand, so we can jump on it the moment they become available. I also talked to Nick, and he said that he thinks that we should try to get some of the, some of our waterworks looping in certain places, so there are not as many dead ends. And also, if we can, try to get bigger pipes. To bring the water in. In particular, underneath eighty-nine.
Did I do?
Tammy, you have anything?
Um, just a couple of quick things. So I got another check. And I have, did I not cash the one from April? Well, I got one in April, so that means two checks in twenty twenty, I'm just confused. I didn't get their cash.
No, cause the one for twenty twenty came in.
Oh, okay, cause I wasn't here for a full twenty twenty, and that came in April, so I'm like, well, did I not deposit? Did I not, did I, so I'm like, I better wait, and then ask you to make sure I'm just not missing one. So that was my question, cause I was just like, um, don't know if this is really mine or if I just, is a replacement, so that's all. And I don't think I had anything else.
Okay, we'll wait for, actually, Heather, you have anything?
No, I just need to know, flop them over. Over there.
Yvonne, do you remember what Kendall was?
The fire department and.
Planning his own.
Planning his own, unless she wanted to rearrange that, or she's over, done, any, it's something we can discuss or whatever.
Actually, I'll go after Yvonne, I was gonna just talk about a couple things, but Yvonne, you have anything that we need to do?
Okay, the, on the Christmas candy, there was some that we, that I ordered from nuts dot com. It was, it kinda crumbled, and so we could only use part of it. But I called and they will give us a credit on it, so we can order something from them next year and absorb the credit that way. It was, just so you know, that's, and, and it's downstairs. Where it's cool. But it's just, but it was those jelly rings, they were kind of a different flavor than we're kind of used to buying, they were, weren't the orange jelly rings, they were like a raspberry. The chocolate was just, it was weird. It just crumbled. So anyway, I scooped out, yeah, so we do have a credit on that. So everybody help us all remember that we do, we just need to order from nuts dot com next year to get, to get that, okay? The flag poles, this one has been fixed several times. There's no light down to the cemetery. We, Manti City is really good to cut, help us, they come out and help us with their truck, you know, so we can get up that high, because we don't have that type of equipment. And there is, we do have a new solar light, but it just, it didn't even work. So they took it down, so the flag down in the cemetery hasn't had a light for quite some time. And that's concerning to me. So we, we either need to maybe try it again, I don't know.
When do we buy that solar light then?
We've had a solar light before for years.
It was great. What, maybe another one, a newer one might work better?
Well, it is a newer one.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, sorry.
We got a new one.
And it's not.
I don't know, Harry kind of was working with them, and we put it up, and he had him put it in a certain place. And it just didn't work. So they took it, they took it down. But anyway, so that's just something we need to really consider and get taken care of, cause we need a light on the flag.
Well, who wants to put a fire there, we'll just ban the fire until we make that.
And then this one out here is the, it breaks. This ring on the inside.
The cord. Cord?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. See, she knows, because Harry probably went right home, told her what's the matter. And anyhow, so I have, at the time, and did it before, and did Harry kind of come and do something with it? And got it.
He bust with it.
Yeah, and it worked for a while, but I came down here one morning and the flag was on the ground.
Oh, it was the pulley or something?
So it, it is in the pulley, but talking to Colonial Flag, it costs eight hundred dollars to come down here, you know, I was gonna have them kind of work the poles, you know, make sure that the other pole was functioning like it should and stuff. And that's quite a bit, so.
So that's something to kind of.
We just kind of need to, again, and it just needs to be addressed.
Okay.
These flag poles, where they, you know, proper.
So we, we want that taken care of.
There's a light on this one, that's the problem.
What about the, are we worried about it falling down again?
The, the flag or the light?
The flag.
The flag, yeah, I, I don't know whether we, I mean, the whole, the whole ism is right down there on the.
So should we have a budget hearing next meeting then, so we don't have to wait?
Well, we need, you know, what we need to do is hire a maintenance person that can, you know, and take care of this. And some other things, you know, that can just be something that they, that they do take care of and maintain. Anyway. Let's see.
Well, didn't we put a thing in the paper for that?
Yeah, yeah, we have an, we have one application, and I've got some information for Tammy, I have some information, and I got that here. But I got thinking, we probably need to run up Wade's, oh, geez, Wade's time to. So we've got some information to decide how we can to me, we need a we have a water master. Okay, we need a maintenance groundskeeper person. And maybe a helper. To somebody, which we, we have Mike Simonson now. You know, he helps quite a bit, but in the summertime, he's really, really busy, because he works up to maintenance.
And, and remember, what's it called right here?
Maintenance man?
Maintenance, okay, so we could, we could have that towards the, the maintenance budget, we could just go ahead and get that.
Maintenance person can take care of, cause when we have Sexton, which is, Kurt takes care of, all he does is take care of the mortuaries notify him. He gets the whole dug.
So we could, we could go ahead and.
He calls jets and excavating, and they come and dig the hole.
Do we have enough in the maintenance budget to just have him come and fix it without reopening the budget?
Who come and fix what?
Um, the, the flag.
It's just, you know, yeah, but I don't know whether we wanna pay that much.
The only thing I was wanting to, we'll have to decide. Yeah, I was just wanting to try to compare with what is it at twenty dollars an hour, and then however, to thirty hours a week, it'd be over thirty thousand dollars a year.
I've actually got something to say on that after Yvonne.
Anyhow, just, somebody that take, can do, do it all basically. Plow the snow, mow the lawns, weedy, dah dah dah, dah dah dah, paint something, fix something. I mean, everything.
Electrical.
Electrical, and, and this applicant we got is, is a mechanic. Basically, I've got the resume. It's in my folder. But he's, he's very knowledgeable, he lives right in town, you know. But this, but I know Tammy wants to go through some figures here, and we can do that. I know there's one town that pays like thirty-seven hundred dollars a month, but they're, they have a crew that does it, but they, they use the town's equipment. So it's not like we're paying somebody come plow the snow, and somebody else come mow lawn, and somebody else to do this. We need to find somebody that we can budget for to do it all, in my, that's my. And that's oh, the compressor, and this is something I've had on my list every month. It came, and it was the wrong base, so they couldn't wire it, so Scott got it back over to Tractor Supply, and we have a rent it back, so that's something we still maybe need to work on. Uh, acquiring this compressor, cause it was both, for both fire department and town use. So anyway, that's what happened to that. We do have, like if we, another thing is if we bought a smaller truck to plow snow with, a jet, one that has a dump, two of dump truck type thing, you know, we'd have the best two worlds. You know, we'd have the, the plow, the truck with the plow on it now is kind of big to get in lots of places when they plow, so.
So I'm, I'm curious, with the air compressor, obviously, we've got a certain amount of money, cause we've got the credit and everything. How does that usually work? Does the mayor appoint someone to take care of it, or is this something?
Well, this would be, this would be something that those maintenance person, you know, we'd hire somebody, can do that, and, and this applicant is well versed in all kinds of equipment.
Oh, we would have to reopen the budget before we could hire him?
I don't know, Stacy, what do you think?
It goes above the amount that was budgeted for.
What, what do we have budgeted for it? Does anyone know?
Yeah, she tapped it.
So it's on the financial statement that you have. So we break it out into the street cemetery part, so it's split three different ways depending on what they do. So you go to page on like page one and two. So basically, over on page two is your streets, we have two thousand dollars there, we have a trench in the other. And we have eight thousand dollars budgeted in the parks for salary, but we've only used fourteen hundred dollars of it. And then cemetery, we.
So those two together.
But the majority of the amount in the parks budget, so basically, when they mow the streets or they plow the streets, we'll take the.
We've got, just all, add all that together to, to finish out the year for the maintenance person.
Okay, so we're fiscal years.
So is that enough to cover hiring somebody between now and June?
Do we know how much? Like, have we made an offer to him, or has?
No.
Okay, so can we get this on the, on the next meeting? I would, how would you get it? Oh, sorry, I thought you were about to say something.
Oh, no, sorry.
We might want to, uh, before we go on that, I'm actually going to, I ran restaurants for a really, really long time. Kind of the way I get to know a new store, and I'm planning on doing it with this, was going through just like financial records for the last year or two. Just cause, you know, you know, like, I don't know what the heck the town spends money on or anything like that, and I wanted to, you know, talk to other people, and they've talked about the maintenance part. I want to go through and find out when we paid other people to do these jobs that the maintenance person could, and I'd like to have like a really solid number that we can do with this. You know, um, so.
Are you talking like a wage a month number, or?
Yeah, like a, a yearly number, like if we, for example, you know, if we've had have someone come and fix the flag pole, and we could have had the maintenance person on salary doing that, that's something that we might not normally look at what the salary person makes, but this is money we're going to be saving.
Right, yeah.
So.
That's what I was trying to do. That kinda helps.
Like say, for example, when we pay the bills, is spouts on there? To plow the snow was a thousand dollars.
For, that was for two times, they charged us five hundred dollars a time.
Yeah. See, but we have to buy a truck for ours, well, we, we have, we can sell that.
But then we're only paying. Yeah, but we're only paying our. So, but that's just how I get to know new stores and stuff. Hopefully, I'll, we're too much for Stacy's time, if you, if you're able to help me.
So I can actually just print out the detailed ledger report for a timeframe.
That would be awesome. Okay, and then, just gonna go over a couple other things. I know that, I know following the Utah code, sometimes especially when we do certain things a certain way is a pain in the butt. I kinda want us to do that, I know that it really holds up the meetings sometimes, but I don't think that we're gonna, if we end up finding a mistake on that, I think we've been pretty good. But I just wanna reiterate that. We do need to have the discussions here, I think, to my understanding, they usually do. But I've heard people complain that they think that decisions are made outside. We're not allowed to do that, the discussions are supposed to be public. Just want to bring that up. Also, I am curious, what would we have to do to get the meetings posted a little bit in advance? I really think that if we had, instead of the twenty-four hour notice, if we posted it a week in advance, I think that we'd get better turnout. And then the, and then just posting it early, if, if something happens, you know, it's subject to change.
Could we do like an annual thing, like in the post office or something, and?
I think that would be a good idea, I do.
If they're on the water bills every month.
But he was to say that some, somebody can see, so I just thought if we had a annual one, then we would.
And then. And if we end up changing things in the last minute, we'd be able to change it up until twenty-four hours.
Stacy, tell me, tell them what you did, or what you told me about having to change.
So are you talking about posting the agenda, like the actions that are gonna happen in the meeting?
Yeah, is that, is that something, or do we have that many things show up at the last minute?
I have to legally have it posted within twenty-four hours, and if somebody contacts me, wants me to put on the agenda, then I have to repost it and stuff.
I'll, you know, there's no, there's no issue.
Put a schedule and then just post your agenda? Twenty-four hours before?
Yeah, I, I think.
Twenty-four hours is all that's required.
For the agenda portion.
For the agenda.
I would like to have it a little bit earlier, is this something we would have to vote on? I think that it would help, and if it makes it easier for you, Stacy, I will even go and run it, repost it, as long as there's no issue that it has to be you, because, you know.
So there's a public meeting notice website that I have to post it to, and it's the records officer that was called.
Is this working?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to suggest something other than just relying on the water bill. In our household, only one person sees that, and it's not me. Seriously, and so I'm kind of out there, hmm, flailing in the breeze. I don't care for that particularly, but I would like to suggest using other options. It's too bad that we don't have a generally publicized Sterling website. Generally publicized.
Oh, and that's what their, Joey Villanilla is taking care of that too. And we'll have a spot for the town council meetings and the agendas, right?
Yes.
Is that part of it?
Okay, that's what I was going to say because, um, I do use the computer. Not well, but I do use the computer. And I would like to encourage something like that that's easily, more easily accessible than what we currently are treated to. So I just wanted to say, I don't see the water bill. I don't see some of the things, some of the announcements that come through the water bill. And that's, yeah, I'm happy to hear that we're gonna have something other than the water bill as the amount of communication.
Right. Also on that, even if we, even if we switched it to forty-eight hours, I think that, I think twenty-four hours is unfair to Stacy. I'm gonna say, I don't think that people should be trying to add things at the last minute. And I know that sometimes that's, you can't help it and stuff. But in my experience, when you've got a deadline, people make sure they beat the deadline and that's it. I think that-
And I've always done the twenty-four hours unless it's like, uh, um, like your hearings and stuff need a longer posting period. Uh, but twenty-four hours, it's not a big deal to me. Like yesterday I did it a couple hours early because I knew I was coming home with my kids and I was afraid I was gonna hit that, miss the deadline. So did it a couple hours early, but if somebody would have come and said, hey Stacy, I'd have to redone it.
Okay.
So.
I would still like to do it early, um, I hope it wouldn't be too much trouble. Um, is that something we would need to vote on or is that just something that we can decide?
We just work on. Or even put a full schedule-
Yeah.
In the post office for each month.
Right, well-
Subject to change on the bottom.
Yeah.
You know?
Um.
As, as an additional, you know? In the paper, in the messenger?
I just know that the code says at least twenty-four hours, so I just think we did it before. But I don't know that if we, if we do a little better on planning, maybe we would, you know, like on Sunday and get it.
Oh, yeah.
On the agenda, and there might still be a few things that come up that we-
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to move it to forty-eight hours. And I'd like us to try to have everything done by forty-eight hours. If not, I will come to the building and repost it though. Um, also, um, Yvonne, I was hoping that I could be here with you next time you're sending out those, the water bills. I'd like to get involved in the process, just kind of know what, everything goes into running the town.
Okay, I'll, we kind of do it together, we have to do it together because she gets part of it. And then I choose the rest of it.
Okay.
It's just a dual control, controlled system.
Okay, and then?
The same as the payments, you know, they're taken out of the box, dual control and then I post them, there's record of what we got.
Okay. Alright, yeah, just let me know.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Alright, and then, um, the last thing is just reviewing the commitments. I, I don't think we ever do this on purpose, but like Stacy brought up a few meetings ago that Nanti City had asked us for some help supporting their officer that's in the school. And we brought up that we were gonna vote on it or discuss it some more or something and it fell through the cracks. Um, I would just like to ask everyone's help to make sure that we're, uh, writing down and reviewing our commitments. So those things don't happen. Again, I don't think it's intentional, I think it's just something that falls through the cracks. Um, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, well, we will read the minutes and get them approved.
Alright.
Right, thank you.
You guys want to?
You don't want to be here any longer Stacy?
Oh, I don't care, if you guys wanna-
We just need to read them and get them approved. There's two months.
Okay, so I have an extra one, do you need this number Tammy?
Yeah. Cause I, I gave, I gave mine.
I want an extra one and I didn't know where it went.
Yeah, it, well, it was mine and then I get far, far off.
December, there's two.
There's November, December.
Or Tammy, or come on, give me her November. She was making up fun of me.
Yeah, I was making up.
Did somebody else need this December?
Oh, I don't know, we're good.
I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
It's our next one.
Question. Scott.
Is there a meter on the overflow to measure how much water is coming from the springs? Kurt thought there might be one, but you were here at the last meeting, if I-
No, there is not. There, there's not a meter there. I know I've discussed that a little bit with Justin, he wanted to put one on there. Uh, so we could measure the overflow and kind of keep track of how much, you know, we were, we hit overflow every day. And so there's always gonna be overflow. And I can, I can tell pretty close with our monitoring system. But if you want to know the exact amount we're overflowing, I think it's probably a good idea. We could throw a meter in there, it wouldn't be a big deal. And, uh, and yeah, I think it's a good idea, but-
Yeah, cause Kurt, uh, in the last meeting Kurt thought that there, said that there was, thought he was, there already was a meter there and that it is required by the state division of water rights. So we had to look and see amount of cost for that. That was on the minutes.
Yeah, no, that's what Kurt said. And Justin was gonna get back with Scott and talk to him about it.
So you wanted-
Kurt thought there was one there because it's-
And he said it's required by the state division of water rights.
Yeah, he thought he, yeah, he thought there was.
I think, I think honestly, I think he's wrong.
Okay.
I think there's one, we have a meter that monitors how much comes out of the two upper springs.
Okay.
We were forced to put that in.
Maybe that's what it is.
And there is that meter. I, I honestly don't think there's one, but maybe I'm wrong, but-
Do you mind checking it, in, in Justin and saying what's possible?
Talk to Kurt about that because I don't think there is one, but, uh, unless he's thinking of that one that we put in on the two upper springs, but-
I think he said there was one on that upper, see what he said.
Yeah, yeah, I, there is one, there is that, but yeah, as far as the overflow, we do not have one. And I'm, I'm about ninety percent, but I'll check with Kurt and make sure.
I just saw that on the, on the minute, so I'm just like, oh, Scott's here.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked, yeah.
Justin's not, Scott's here, so.
Yeah.
So this says Preston Mound wants to put in or maintenance?
Yeah.
Can you talk to Justin?
Remember last time he said if, if Sterling ever, ever goes to full time?
I think that was all the thing.
Oh, I think that's it, yeah.
He would, he would be interested in it.
I think that was a full time thing.
Yeah, okay.
I can't imagine he quit his cooking job.
No, I didn't.
He's full time for either right now.
Okay, yeah. Where does he live?
He from?
Yeah, we need to make him known.
Yeah.
I'd like to make an amendment to some of the December one. Um, on when I, when I was talking about the code, about the newly elected officials. And we sworn in the first council meeting in January. The code covers that they're, they're still in office as of January first, they're still the new position as of January first, even if they're not sworn in, at least the code covers that.
You want me to add that clarification?
Please. I think we're actually- So did you have any more interested in your, you have here on that eight to ten? Did you have any more interested in the steering committee or are you still looking and we run into people?
No, they've got them.
They got eight to ten, good.
Yeah, they've got, they've got what they needed and they've held them, they've held one meeting already.
Yeah, I knew that, so, that's awesome.
I, I think he's satisfied with what he needed.
Awesome.
I've got some pictures and info maybe that they might want. Do you like pictures you got? Hmm, like Sterling pictures?
Oh, speaking of which, um, for the website, we need a picture of just me, I guess, and then the, well, should we wait until Justin's here for the city council?
Cause on that paper that he-
Catch you guys meeting, I guess.
I guess that, well, what, what Michael says is he wants to be, cause he wants to have phone number and email on each picture.
These guys aren't doing the plan.
Yeah, I think, I think you're, you're confused.
These guys are just putting GIS.
I know.
Mike will be the one dealing with all that stuff.
I was just joshing.
Yeah.
I can take your picture anytime.
Can you? Don't you have some pictures of Sterling then?
Some old ones, yes, very good.
Well, that's kind of what Mike-
They look the best ones.
They're the best.
They're the best.
Yeah.
The best. They're the best, very, very, okay. I make a motion that we approve the minutes for November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one as presented.
With the amendment, uh-
That's the something that was in it.
Oh, wait, no.
She'll do that.
Do I have a second for the motion?
I have a second.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
I make a motion that we pass the minutes for December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one with the amendment as stated.
Okay, can I get a second?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most of the passes.
Did I miss an email about the bills Stacy? From December, you were gonna send one out? I, I missed a few emails and had a problem with my email, so.
Well, no.
Okay, sorry, I didn't-
No, it was just, I thought that I had presented the bills because I had them all read and out and so-
And we might have hurried it candy.
And so I had it in my mind that I had presented them and read them. And so Yvonne's like, do you have to send an email? I'm like, no, I read them. I don't, but she's like, are you sure? And then when I was listening to the minutes, I'm like, um, I did read them.
That's okay, I'm just like, oh man, I better be careful. That's one email, I don't want to be getting, losing.
No, that's, that's my memory. But Yvonne, she tried to call me out and I'm like, no Yvonne. So when I told him like, um, hey Yvonne, guess what? She's like, I knew it. I'm like, I know you did, sorry.
Anyway.
Yeah.
We got that call.
I am, E-Rock's there Stacy, I did it.
Alright, what's next, bills?
Actually, so here, here is one more, I did the item on there.
Okay.
We, in November, we had all had the budget here and we opened up the budget and then it was table. Um, so that included two different things. It was one, the donation, which you guys are gonna be the vote on. And the second one was to include, um, the revenue and expense of the ARCA money that we received. We didn't originally have it in our budget, so we needed to openly a budget to accept that revenue and expenditure, so, um.
Okay, can I?
The dollar amount, do you want me, do you want the dollar amount?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah, it's right here in the manifest.
Eighteen nine thirty-six.
Yeah.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion to?
I make a motion that we pass the ARCA funding on the, added to the budget for the fiscal, current fiscal year.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Okay, and then approval payment of bills?
Okay, so.
I'm so angry at why we, Illinois, putting the back on and everybody looks at it.
Yeah. Trying to be quiet, oh, she's not even gonna put it back on.
Well, I guess if I had turned it off, I didn't worry about it.
Okay, so budgets, or excuse me, bills to be paid is there's backdoor meter for eighty-one dollars and forty cents. The main card center is for a thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. And that's for the Visa card. Um, so the things that were on there was the nine hundred and eleven dollars and thirteen cents for water fire school. That was for registration fees and for the room. Um, and then posts for the cemetery and, which was five hundred twenty-seven dollars, twenty cents. And the solar lights for the cemetery was a hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, and then the next one central, you have public health, twenty dollars. Dominion Energy, two hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty-four cents. Um, Dallas yard care for snow removal, a thousand doublers. Anderson Market, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents. And that was for the Christmas candy sacks. Um, Herman's and sixty-four dollars, forty-six cents. The IRS for payroll taxes, two hundred eighty-five dollars and forty cents. Jensen Excavating, two hundred dollars. Nanti Tele, one hundred and three dollars, sixty-nine cents. Rural Water Association, four hundred and nine dollars. Sumpi County Fire District, five hundred and ten dollars. Sumpi County Land Bill, five hundred four, five hundred four dollars, sixty cents. Sterling Country Store for peanuts, fifty, hundred fifty dollars. Um, and then workforce services for fees, fifty dollars. And the Utah Division of Finance for fees, four hundred forty-three dollars, ninety-two cents. There's a list.
Okay.
With explanations and stuff on it, but yeah, I don't ask any questions now.
Okay. Doesn't the, my, did you miss the payroll on there?
No, I haven't done the payroll yet.
Okay, is that separate from, okay, alright.
Yeah, no, that's not on there. It's, I haven't done it yet because it ends on the fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it was, so it started from the sixteenth and goes to the fifteenth.
Alright, no, thank you for that. I just, I remember you guys voting on that and stuff, so I was like, I missed something somewhere, I missed some of the bills.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, can I get a motion to accept the bills?
I make a motion, we pay the bills as presented.
Okay, make it. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Or I'm supposed to say all those opposed, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, and then do we just have to have a adjournment?
I make the motion of return.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, we are out of here.
Thank you everybody for coming.
Yes.